Hi, how are you doing?
Good.
Anyone want to talk about the Lakers?
The Hawks, Lakers, Raiders?
Yes, those would be them.
What happened to them?
They won. They played the Jazz.
I'm glad it's hard. What is that, they have both 500?
Pardon me?
They have both 500 now?
You know, they're right at 500.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If that was baseball, you'd be doing pretty good.
Right?
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to today's meeting. Today is Monday, November the 3rd, 2023, the time is now 3:00 PM. We have a couple items today. We have a work session as well as a special meeting. A work session consists of a discussion of additional funding request by Noah's Ark. Second item is opinion canyon white paper, and item three is exit 14, followed by a special meeting in consideration of additional funding request by Noah's Ark. And then also item two, which is a briefing of the ordinance for our next budget cycle. We will get started first with item one in our work session.
Mr. Mayor, we have Neil Paul.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt you.
Better reminder. Neil, would you come forward? I think you wanted to kind of give us an explanation as to what your give us a brief explanation of what you're doing.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, not to introduce this. So we've been talking with Mr. Paul about some redevelopment of the Eckhart School. And so we just wanted to not a discussion item for today. So we just wanted to have Mr. Paul come in and give a couple of updates of what he's working on.
Thank you, appreciate it, thanks. Yeah, and you mentioned I want to catch up a little bit about the Temple, about Temple errand here. Now, we're still just on the cusp of getting National Historic Landmark. It's been in the process for a long time. We're really getting closer. We're literally just waiting for the signature from the Secretary of Interior, Deb Howland. And we were hoping to get it before the government shutdown, which hopefully won't happen. But shutdown won't happen. So anyway, we're really close to getting it done. We're doing everything we can for fundraising. We're participating in Colorado Gives Day, so we've been raising some good money here just lately. We need a new roof, and that's a million dollars. So anyway, okay, that's it about the Temple. The school, as you guys know, I picked up, you know, purchased the school from the school district last year. And Head Start has been there, they're still there. They're, you know, the one tenant in the building. And so half of the building is occupied, the other half is vacant. We're just trying to do everything possible to bring in more youth. I know this sounds like a song and dance, whatever, but like the Temple, I think that that should should remain as the temple as originally built. And I believe that Eckhart should remain as a school or for youth as it was originally built. I've had numerous calls, you know. I've been solicited by developers and different folks to do something completely different there on that property. And I just don't unless it totally does not work out for me to bring youth in there. I might, you know, I have to do what I have to do, but I might be forced to do something different. But I'd rather keep kids in that school, on that property. So I guess my request is if anybody has any input or suggestions or ideas, or maybe back to me later, about maybe local youth groups that might want to consolidate and be on one campus. Or if you know anyone who's coming into town from another state or country, whatever, whether it's regional or national group that needs some space to accommodate children for training, for education, for developmental training, whatever the case might be. So that's really my update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're expecting some really good things to come out of this, and we'll be working with Mr. Paul and the school districts and bringing you guys some information to develop for the
Mr. Ruber and I, we met with him actually last week. Went up there and talked about several items, gave us some thoughts we had. Do you guys have anything that you can give us, give us some info and reach out to?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, item one, discussion of additional funding request by Noah's Ark.
Mr. Mayor, we have the executive director of Noah's Ark, Sue, is here with us today. And so I would invite her up. She has distributed a paper in very small font. There's a lot to answer. But you all should have a copy of that. And so I'll turn it over to Sue to kind of present, talk about some of the issues there, seeing what Noah's Ark.
Mr. Mayor, I've been asked to recuse myself and go down and help Ms. Fisher because she is fairly new to the position at Noah's Ark. I'm the only board member available that can give you any background. She's got the current information. And also, I apologize for being late. I got stuck out there with someone. Is that all right?
That's all right.
Okay. Sorry.
Not at all.
Okay.
Thank you all for allowing Noah's Ark back in today. And I'd like to try to answer any good questions as far as, you know, the last video of last week and see what we can do to hopefully get some funds to support itself.
Okay, you have any additional information you want to give us?
No, I don't think.
There's not anything additionally, no. Right. We we have payrolls and medical bills and all that to meet. We're just not meeting all those costs that we can.
So your current, your current ask is what?
150.
An additional 150, keep what you're doing now. Let's get some discussion going from council.
Sue, I was going to ask you, is there a limit on the unwanted dogs and cats?
What do you mean, a limit?
In accepting them?
Yeah, our capacity, yes.
Well, I know, but you're beyond capacity, right?
We are, yes.
So you have to turn people
We're turning, we're turning dogs and cats away at this point.
And people that just drop them off, what do you do with those?
We have to take them. We have to find a spot, you know. Just last week, someone came in and told her, I'm sorry, we can't take this dog. They walked out the door, dropped the dog in the parking lot and drove off. You know, I had to find a spot for it.
So if you're over inundated with animals or with cats and dogs, you don't have the property, proper facilities right now?
No, we don't, you know. And so we're using pop-up candles and things like that. You know, is it within regulations? Yes, but is it good for the animals? Absolutely not. So, you know, we're making sure that we're doing much more enrichment and much more walking them, walking them around, having, spend more time outside. And here we are coming into the wintertime. And, you know, even that's not, you know, a good scenario.
So the additional money you're asking for, would that also be used for pop-up tents and things for the animals? Or what would that be used for?
For salaries, medical bills, you know, the cost of everything, yes. And it is not to help the Tristore. The Tristore carries itself.
Right, it's separate.
And then it does help support us a little bit. You know, they can't support, you know, the shelter completely.
How much would you say the Tristore generates in record, about 150,000?
I think that's what it is. Yeah, we are, yes.
I mean, just a couple of questions just for Noah's there. You have 23 employees working, are those full-time employees?
No, the majority are, we do have a few part-time. We have five part-time people.
Okay, then the real question is, like, I know you don't give as many donations or stuff like you had in the past. Is there a reason for some of this other than it's, I mean, there are people that donated money that aren't donating anymore, or is it cut back? I mean, I understand the way the economy is and that, but we just
That's a good part of it also. We also unfortunately lost several of our big donors who passed away.
Yeah, that's what
Grants are drying up. Things that were available before COVID are not there now.
So do we need to, I know, expand a little bit on the shelter? Do we need to add more for the dogs and then? I mean, are we having an issue with
With space?
With turning it down and stuff like that? I mean, we're liable, I mean, we need to take care of that, find a way to take care of these animals. And as an estimate, just a rough estimate, how much would it, how much does it cost to run Noah's Ark for a year? I mean, do you have those kind of figures?
Yeah.
It's between $1 million and $6,000.
And that's, that would be the total cost for food, everything, I mean, just running and moving. And then you say you get $100,000 from Tristore, basically?
Yes.
And is there any other income that's, I mean, comes without donations? Is that basically it?
Right, and then we have, we have adoption fees.
Well, yeah, you could mean that, but that doesn't, that doesn't add up very much.
No, it doesn't. We also have the licensing fees. We also have whenever animals get loose and taken, so the surrender, not surrender, replanning fees. But those are not all large amounts, you know.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, the big question there is we need to help, but we also need to find some way to have you guys self-sufficient too. And I don't know how we do that, but those are ideas that we work with. Is there anything that you have that we might help you with for a bit?
May I interject?
Sure.
So we've been looking at the ordinance that applies to animal control. And I'm thinking we might want to go back. As a matter of fact, Mr. Ruber and Ms. Fisher have been working together. They're going to start collaborating, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, that's problem number one. I think we have an ordinance that doesn't apply anymore. Number two, I think we need to get tough with people that are not taking care of their animals. We might have to increase the fines. So it's punitive, so they won't do it again. But, you know, that, that's number two. You know, we have had changes with executive directors. Ms. Fisher is the third in a year and a half, a year and a half, two years. So that hasn't helped our cause. Post-pandemic hasn't helped our cause. You know, you've heard it say how people took animals during the pandemic. Well, we've got them all back, and their babies and their puppies, you know, everything else. But I think we need what we need, you know, Noah's, I've been a part of this organization a very bit eight, nine years. And we, we have depleted all of our savings. Any funds that we have for emergencies have all gone to the operation of the shelter. And I think council going forward needs to ask the city of Trinidad what, what kind of animal shelter you want. You know, yeah. It's half a million dollars. I mean, we've carried the brunt of that. And leaving the new shelter, we didn't have a choice to build a new shelter because a prior administration sold the animal shelter that we had. So with this new animal shelter in, in effect now, we have more rules and regulations, we have more employees. And Bepi's, if you didn't realize, Beps are at a premium right now. Yeah.
Just for clarification, you said that you were working on, number one, the ordinance change, what does that pertain to?
I wasn't privy to those, Sue and Steve are, it's an ongoing.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, council member, I can speak to that a little bit. We haven't really gotten deep yet into looking at the ordinance other than recognizing that it's worth looking at to see if there's updates to it. I guess the one thing I would say is, as far as animal control and animal problems go in our community, it's a people issue, not an animal issue.
Exactly.
And so we want to make sure that our laws are enforceable and that we can do our part to making sure we're taking as much burden off of Noah's Ark as possible. The conversations I've been having with Noah's Ark have been centered on realizing that today we're asking for some, let's get us through the end of the year money. But that, to your point, is not a long-term solution.
No.
We can work on some
We really do need, I'm envisioning similar to what we're doing with our homeless coalition, putting together maybe an animal coalition of partners together in the next month or so to all come together at the table and talk about how we can address this as a community concern.
I like you much better up here. Thank you, that's all I have, thank you, appreciate it.
So I'm going through the ordinances, is it chapter four and animals, basically, that is what is the guiding set of laws, ordinances that require the city to do certain things? And I guess I've always felt like the city's required to do some of these things. You are our you're like our licensee who's doing these things on behalf of the city. So it's, it's hard, I think, for all of us to keep that in mind because Noah's Ark started as a whole different kind of idea. It was independent of the city and was kind of in just this, when I first moved here, I was really impressed with Noah's Ark and all the work that it was doing and all of its fundraising activities. And it seemed to be doing very well. We were able to shuttle animals around the state that we couldn't take in. So I may just get us back to that place. But I think it's something we have to keep in mind, that it's not it may be that what we're asking you all to do is way beyond what a nonprofit organization can do without significant support from the city. And so I don't, I don't think you should feel badly or that you're doing something wrong. You're doing what we need you to do. And things are more expensive. I'm looking through this and it says in the empowerment fees are $10 a day for the care and feeding of an animal. That's way, way under what it should be. So yes, we need to live to hold that. I do want to understand, so right now in our budget, how much do we budget every year for Noah's Ark? Not including the marijuana funds?
$135,000.
$135,000. And then on top of that, we've been doing, is it $25,000?
That's, that is included.
And this is all marijuana money, or is it?
Well, $100,000 is marijuana, $35,000 was that you did, right?
Yeah.
Mayor, Council, if I may, so we, our service agreement with Noah's Ark, I think, contemplates that we pay them a fee of $35,000 a year. And then last year, council authorized a quarterly amount of $25,000 out of marijuana for this year.
So, so that is part of what goes towards that $500,000 or $600,000 a year in cost. So there's a shortfall. It looks like we got $100,000 from the Tristore licensing fees, adoption fees, and empowerment fees. Do you have any sense of what that is?
I'm sorry.
Any sense of what the
How much are you getting on those?
Yeah.
No, I don't. I'd have to look back and research that. But it's not a lot.
And it's not enough to cover what the cost of providing resources is?
No.
Okay. I think what would be really helpful would be a specific budget of what you think it would cost to do everything that you need to do.
I think that's our problem.
Yeah, that would give us a sense of what we can develop towards it and what possibly other sources could be brought in.
That makes sense about what this little truth said about bringing in an estimate of what the balance is left. I was trying to figure that out. I mean, was another half a million is what we're looking at?
Not quite that much.
I mean, I mean, $500,000 for the, for the year, how much you said for the year to run Noah's Ark?
For to run it, it's, you know, between $500,000 and $600,000. So we're at the end of this year, currently at the end of October, we're at $135,000 lots. Because we're sitting right now with, you know, two months to go.
No, no fundraiser's done that. Is that a career?
Well, we, you know, we have the, we have the Christmas, you know, push, you know, the letters are going out, you know, this week. And then next, coming into next year, we're doing the football. So that, I believe has been done in the past.
Yes.
And you kind of want to be ahead of the game.
Exactly. We don't want to be in this position.
Right. So is this overlap, what you're asking for, you're going to the
There's not going to be a whole lot of overlap at this point, right? Into, into the next year, but there'll be some.
There's, may I? Okay. There's two things that I think this is just a temporary condition. I'm hoping it's just a temporary condition for two reasons. Number one, is we have a qualified rescue person. She has the connections. We lost those connections when our executive director two years ago quit on this court. She just quit, no advance notice. Any connections she had, she took with her. We didn't have that information. Sue is connected with the rescue world and people she's already working on.
Trying to get
Yeah, getting made up about that. And, and, and correct me if I say anything wrong, Sue. We discussed, we've been discussing this right along. But the problem Trinidad has is we're getting big dogs. Nobody wants big dogs. So Sue has an opinion, just like the dog that she mentioned in the story. People that live out in the country, if we refuse their dog, they just bring him to town anyway. So I don't know if we need to have an ongoing discussion with county as well. Now, we can't bring in more dogs. But this is, I think this is a mutual problem that we have. That's one solution I think can help. Number two is we've been begging for a professional grant writer. And we've been, we have on the board somebody that's done grants, but not professionally. So you have to understand this half million dollar business, though it be nonprofit, is run by five elderly women and a very young executive.
I'm in that same category with you.
But, you know, we're, for instance, we do almost everything. I've been kind of lax lately and I apologize, but, you know, we have five ladies that are very passionate and dedicated to doing animal control correctly in Trinidad.
So when, when we change the I'm sorry, I want to go back and ask you something. Karen, when you said you're hoping it's temporary?
Yes.
You mentioned a few things that may turn it around, but could you expand a little on what would turn that around?
Well, Sue's expertise for one. Okay, she understands. You know, I hate this more than anything in the world to talk about dogs and cats as a commodity. But it's the truth, this is the way it is, this is the reality we face. Big dogs are not a commodity that can be adopted. I mean, we have an elderly population. We have a population that doesn't have a lot of expendable money, which is part of the problem. So she's trying to get the big dogs transferred where the people want big dogs. And she's bringing small dogs in that are in demand in this area. See, we didn't have that, we didn't get that connection before. Because none of us on the board were, were passionate about animal control and animal welfare, but she's got the expertise. So we're trying to get this, you know, straightened out that way. And I really do think if we, if we stiffen up these ordinances, I think that's going to be a big help part of the time, but you've got to put some teeth in it.
So that's, that's one of the connections that you say we lost, is that ability to make those trades easily?
Yeah.
And we're gaining that back now?
We're starting to, yes. All the shelters, all the rescues, all across the whole country are in the same position, everybody's full. But I'm starting to get some of my contacts that I have through my rescue saying, hey, we'll, we can start helping you. Instead of bringing dogs from New Mexico and Texas, we'll, we'll, you know, help you here.
How much will restoring those connections, how much will that help us on an annual basis? Is there a way to say dollar amount of that money?
Well, we don't have to do any spaying duties about all the big dogs. Right there, because the rescues will handle that. If I bring in the small, medium-sized dogs that Trinidad, I've already proven, is one thing, okay? We're going to be bringing in revenue on the adoption fees of the small dogs.
Okay. Then, someone brought up the how the empowerment fees aren't reflective of how much it is to board a dog. And I think that's definitely true at $10. I mean, that's really low. How fast can we make changes to that? What is the process to make changes? Is that a board's decision?
It's up to you.
Okay, cool. All right. So I think we should do that post-age, right?
Before I get away from that, just asking a question, would that be an ordinance change or would that be a resolution?
It'd be an ordinance change.
Okay, thank you, Karen. The other thing that I wanted to ask about is a professional grant writer, if we have a professional grant writer through this timeframe, do you, can you speculate as to how many dollars we missed out on that we could have captured if we had a professional grant writer?
That's almost impossible, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't know.
But
So I went back and looked at all the grants that we, Noah's Ark got in the past. Most of them are, no longer exist.
But I mean, it's something
And there's not a lot of new grants out there, right?
It's something that we need to answer, though, because, I mean, to get a professional grant writer, we have to expend money. And then what money are we gaining from that? So it's a cost versus benefit analysis, right? But it occurs to me, many agencies really have a real belief that they would benefit by having grant writers. So it's probably something that we could and should look at for maybe being a shared commodity, although I don't know how you know, you know, if you give people, one person several losses, then usually it doesn't turn out very well. But maybe, maybe it's something that we can do. Then the last question I had, probably is this says current monthly operating costs exceed $52,500. That's sort of open-ended, like exceed by how much?
Well, actually, you probably shouldn't say exceeds, because that's what it was, that's what it's been running at, about $50,000.
Okay, so that's, that's more of a solid estimate than a baseline?
Yes.
Okay.
We're talking about mostly minimum wage rates?
Yes.
And that, so that $52,500, that covers wages, food, vets, everything, pretty much?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's a, I'm like Karen, I don't like reducing it down to hard numbers. But I mean, what else, what else can we do in this position? So, Mayor, that's every question I have.
One of the, that came to me. Has Noah's Ark ever approached the college about any kind of a coordinated program? If veterinarians and veterinary techs are in such high demand, it might be something that my college would be interested in starting a program. And then kids could volunteer and learn with whatever vet who was doing services in Noah's Ark.
Get student.
Yeah. So that might be
So what our problem currently is with that, because I've already thought of that too, is we don't have an onsite vet. So we, any medical we have to take, and we're taking most of them up to college rooms.
But do we ever have that super one?
No.
Is there a regular vet to work there?
Yes, can't do surgeries there. But yes, we do need a vet to, will come and be there maybe once a week, once every two weeks type thing to look at the animals, to see what I'm not catching. I'm not a vet, I didn't go to school for veterinary. But I've been able to feel long enough that I can tell a sick dog. And I'm learning And I'm learning about sick cats now, because I've been always in the animal realm, the field. And so I can, I can spot this, this needs to get to vet.
I'm just thinking if if by any chance something like that could be worked out, then the vet would be associated with that program and could work out of no charge.
Right, so again, as we have, so for the the vet techs that are in the colleges, they've become vet techs, they have to be working under a vet to get any qualifying hours. I've looked, you know, into this. And since we don't have a vet on staff, so to speak, we won't, we wouldn't have to use them as far as training. Because that's what they want. They need to be trained. I can't train them, neither can my, my person, that's a vet tech that's in there, can't train them. So they would not, all they would be doing is volunteering their their dollars and ton without getting any, you know, anything that goes towards their degrees.
I'm thinking a whole new thing. Would be a whole new program, so they would, they would have to have a vet.
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, so, I guess just something to think about.
Yes, yeah.
This additional $150,000 that you're looking for, is that just for this year or does that do the next year?
Yeah, we, that's to get us through this year.
Through this year. I think one of the things that really, in order for us to be able to make a real good decision on this, we had some projections. And what I mean by that is, it's hard to quantify like you're asking about the grant. But there's something that maybe we can quantify a little bit more. You talked about maybe increasing the fines. What those increases in fines and, you know, it 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 can vary from year to year. But find out if you increase it by $5 or $10 or wherever the state averages are higher, where you decide you want to do that. It'll give us some idea of how much additional dollars that would fund you. The other thing is, is to ask, to see if the county is willing to do something. The other item that I see in here is, it's not been done, but you're talking about doing it again, is the fur ball. Look back at the fur ball to see what kind of revenue that was generated.
That was about 100, excuse me, 15,000.
Yeah.
That 15,000, okay.
So those are all, those are items that, you know, all do need these projections. That way it gives us some idea how, you know, what would work. Because the way I've looked at it is this 150,000 is only for this year, but it looks to me like this is going to be an additional year with this additional. So we're looking at a total of $285,000 from next year is what we would, you know, the council would be looking at, which is pretty substantial. Whether or how we can fit that into our budget and this current 150 that you're asking for. Mr. Ruler, where was that coming from at this point?
And Mr. Mayor, I have talked to Cheryl about that. Do you want to comment on that? I don't know that we have $150,000 sitting around, but we can, we'll get our budget.
So for fiscal year 2023, we had an $800,000 surplus. That was because we received extra interest revenue, extra severance tax, extra minimum wage tax. We're going to talk to you about that in our budget meeting today. So we would have it available for 2023. We absolutely do not have anything extra for 2024, which we'll discuss in our.
So it's available at least for this year. It looks all right, but we'll discuss that. Something that you you mentioned is that you've had, well, let's go back to some funding. People that bring in large dogs from the county, and do they just dump them or do they ask you and then dump them?
Yep, that's pretty much it, yes.
So do they ask you first?
They do, yes, and then they dump them in our parking lot.
So let me ask you this, when they come in? And you take their name and phone number and stuff first? That way if they dump them, then I think, would this be advisable that they could be fined for doing something like that?
Well, did we get a picture of their, their license?
How would that work?
I I don't know of a municipal offense for illegal dumping of a dog. And you're, if you're saying, no, we can't take your dog, you don't normally say, but leave me your contact information. Or I mean, that's like giving them an opening. So I hear what you're saying, but.
Well, I'm just bringing that up because just to say that I think that that's something that needs to be looked at.
Yeah.
And like you say, you can take a picture of their license, you can always contact who they are.
Right.
If that's the case, you can always find their permission.
Although it's kind of just like, right, if they're lousy enough, that's the best word I can think of, to dump their dog there. I'd rather they have it, have the dog than the people who are lousy enough to dump the dog.
That's true, but they're going to dump it anyway.
I know, but I'm just.
The world I'm saying is, I think if that's going to have to be, then the ordinance change that they can be fined for illegal dumping, I think that's something that that can be looked at.
And Mr. Mayor, just so we're all clear, the, if it's a dog that's chipped and someone abandons it, we would be able to track the owner of that dog and then they would be subject to the impound fee because they've abandoned, we've impounded it. One of the problems that we have is sometimes people will find a dog just on the side of the road and they want to do the right thing. So they'll get the dog, bring it and say, you know, here, we're dropping off this dog. We say no, and they just say, okay, well, it's not my dog, and they release it anyway. So it'd be a very slippery slope, I think, in trying to enforce that, but I appreciate where you're going. I think looking at our impound fees and making sure that they're appropriate level would be a good first step.
The other thing too, as you mentioned, that you've been trying to transfer large dogs out to other areas, bring in smaller dogs. What kind of success are you having with that?
As far as the small dogs coming in, they are going out and adopted very, very quickly. The big dogs going out is very, very slow. So I can only bring in where I have space for on the middle side.
And the other thing you mentioned is that, of course, we would have, you'd have to have a qualified vet to do surgeries. If by chance that there was a capability of having somebody like that.
On staff.
On staff. How would that affect the overall?
It would, that would be, if we could have a vet on staff that could do surgeries, because there are one, we don't have the equipment to do it, okay? I could, I could make the room to do that, okay? We would be able to offer low cost spay and neuter to the public. We can offer low cost vaccinations to the public. We could generate income, big income, by being if we have a vet on staff.
Or is the neurosurgical center for the the neurosurgical vet?
That we use?
Well, in the area right now.
On the corner right next door.
Okay.
Yeah, but we don't use them.
Okay, so there is some, okay.
And then, actually, we don't use any vet that's in Trinidad other than for emergency.
Have you approached either one of them to see if they would be willing to be part of a staff on call type thing?
No, I'm not.
It's not, if I could please, it's not like, I think Noah's Ark has a long history with both doctors, Feldudo and and Arrow, and, you know, having them do that is like taking time away from their most lucrative, you know, practice or their, what they make the most money for. And I know, you know, they have, they have been the vet that to help Noah's Ark off and on, either one of them has for years. But I don't know that they're wanting to spend more time or dedicate more time to Noah's Ark. And and vets are like lawyers, stay with me. No one wants to move to the rural areas, so they're scarce. I know you're surprised to hear that about lawyers, but it's true.
I just bring that up, you know, I just, I wanted to reference, maybe you might want to just talk, ask them. If there's anything possible, they might just say no, and that's it, but I think it's worth that.
We as a council and we as a community have to define what we want in them. And if we can afford what we want in them, okay. If not, then something's going to have to change because, you know, you look at a couple of nonprofits here in Trinidad that were entertainment nonprofits. They couldn't make it financially and they couldn't make it because they were volunteer based dwindled. While Trinidad, Noah's Ark is no different. Yeah, so it's got to be, we've got to make some drastic changes in order for us to be solid again.
In, sorry, Mayor, in in plain English, you're saying like, are we going to become a kill shelter or a no kill shelter?
Sure. I'll answer that. If you become a no kill shelter, I'm gone.
Yes, am I.
Well.
Well, I'm gone anyways.
But I mean, what you're saying is we have to decide what.
Let me define, define no kill.
A no, a no kill shelter is basically we, that's, that's in a way, that's what we are. We only euthanize for the quality of life. And I'm 100% okay for that. If I have to euthanize to make room, I am not okay with that and I will not do it. And if I'm mandated by the city to do that, I will be gone.
But I mean, but in in effect, that's what you're saying, Karen, isn't it?
Right.
Like either to be a, to be a shelter that focuses on finding homes and adopting, that costs money. And the alternative is cheaper, but it, no one really wants to talk about.
I don't, I think our community is better than that.
I hope so.
So let me ask you another question, you know, what is the cost of adopting a small dog versus a large dog?
Uh, 300, $350 for small dogs, $50 for a large dog, 5200. That's all I can get.
Do you, do you find that people come in and they want a dog, but they just say, I just can't afford it? Does that?
On rare occasions, yeah.
How do you work with that?
I have the I have a rescue mentality, okay? So I look at, they can't afford adoption, do you have a good, afford a, the medical care for that dog? That's how I approach that. You know, if you can't afford 300, how are, what are you going to do on the job? If the dog gets out, it's hit by a car and you have a $5,000 medical job. It breaks a leg jumping off of a chair, that little dog can do that. And, and, you know, it's a $1,500 bill. If you can't pay 300, how you going to pay 15?
Any other questions?
I have one more question.
Go ahead, one more question, why do you so? Go ahead.
So how how do other, maybe council logos read questions better? But how do other shelters that operate in basically the same fashion, what funding sources do they have? Do you know, like say, Carver Springs has a massive shelter and, I mean, like, I only know, because we watched a lot of shelters when we ultimately got our dog, we ended up getting him from here. But like you see, those dogs sit there for quite some time, so I'm assuming they do their level best to find home. So how did, what funding sources do those places have, do you know?
I do believe that the shelter up there has a huge, huge donor base.
Okay.
It's huge thing. And I do know that they probably go out and get, you know, some grants too. But they also have a huge contract with Carver Springs. They contract, their contract is huge. And also, the Porto Shelter is under them too, and so they have contracts. Porto City, yeah, and they're, that's a big, huge, huge shelter.
The last thing that I, I know it's a sensitive question, but I like the idea that Mr. Ruler suggested of various parties who are interested in animal welfare in this community getting together and sitting down and talking. Because I know that the PALS folks put on a spay and neuter clinic recently that where they spay and neuter, I think, over 100 animals. And that was done locally, they found a site for it. So I'm, I'm wishing that there was better coordination between, between Noah's Ark and that group so that, I don't know if Noah's Ark is telling people, there is a clinic coming up that PALS is putting on.
We do, we do.
See, that, that was the Bergen clinic that you were talking about? And Noah's Ark has brought that to Trinidad in the past before Sue got here. But that costs, whatever nonprofit is sponsoring it, costs $8,000. And our finances weren't good enough for others to take it. Their only cost is when they have the money, they spend the money. We don't have that luxury. So we asked them, do you have the finances to take that over?
That's great. I mean, I don't think that's a bad thing.
No, it's not.
It's good that more people are helping out and jumping in.
Well, you know, this is a, this is a problem, as you can see, that we can see. For this year, you know, we're going to take that up in our set, our special meeting for the additional funding today. But the big issue comes around for next year.
Yeah.
And what will happen, because like, you know, finance director said there is no additional funding for next year. So that's what I think we're doing, a good projection for next year is to.
And that's no bad problem, I get that.
That's what I think.
Can't get it for this afternoon, right, get it, you know.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Mayor, Council, just to add a couple of things. So we are more than happy to work directly with Noah's Ark from a staff standpoint and look at what they're anticipating for their budget next year and come back with some recommendations. But I do think it's important that we start getting our community partners involved. We have a very interesting structure. If it was just a full nonprofit that was an animal shelter and adoption clinic, they would have a lot more control over which dogs they're taking or not. If we bring them a dog from our animal control for impounding, we have a legal requirement to do that. And we contract with them to provide that service. Whereas other municipalities may just have the entire animal services being a general fund obligation, where they just fund it out of their general revenue. Certainly, they would get some, some return on investment in terms of fees and that type of thing. But I think we have a lot to sort out with what's going to be the best model in the world for our town. Obviously, we can't have Noah's Ark just close their doors tomorrow. So we really do depend on them right now, but I think it's very incumbent that we come together and come up with some larger solutions.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
Yeah, thank you, Sue.
Okay, on to the Pinion Canyon white paper, and I'll all give you guys, break you guys, how this all came about. As you know, Pinion Canyon has been in existence since 1983. And during that time, like I said, they've been very limited to what they can do as far as training out there. There is a pipeline that goes right down the middle from the bottom end to the top end. And it inhibits the training that they can do, they cannot use that property completely. It takes away, you know, close to 300 acres just along the pipeline itself. But it infringes on their capability of being able to to train. And as we know, the world that we live in today is getting more and more and more and more dangerous. As you, we can see everything that's going on and what could happen. We know this won't happen immediately, but it could happen down the road or this, this. The whole idea is to take that pipeline and re-move it to another part of, maybe the edge of the property. Or the other option that we discussed is maybe talking to Kinder Gordon and to see if they're willing to maybe cap it, reroute the gas line, the gas to a different pipeline, still have come up with the same results, because that pipeline does service a big area, not only the state, but other parts of the country, I understand. So I'll kind of tell you how this came about. Last year, when Mr. Ruler and I attended the strategic planning meeting in Fort, Fort Carson, actually, 2022, this was brought up. This has been an ongoing discussion for years now. But it came up at the strategic planning meeting in 2022. And the recommendation at that time was that in order to get some, something started on this, that it should come from the city and the county together to start putting something together to, what can happen with it? Well, you know, really didn't know what we could do with it. But what ended up happening is, last year, as you know, when I went to Washington DC, I met with a couple of people from the Pentagon and just to let you know, I think I've sent you out some of that information before. But the two people that I met with was Andrew Napoleone Polley, he was from the Office of Deputy Assistant Secretary of the Army, and also Ivan Bolden, who is the Chief Army Partnerships, he's the Chair of the Joint Services Committee. And in May of this year, Ivan came to Carver Springs for a meeting. And we had a discussion on that. He said the best thing to do is start to develop a white paper. And to send up to him, because he recommended that we do this before the end of the year to get it done. And the reason being is that he is retiring at the end of this year. And that to get it in his hands so that he could distribute it to whoever it goes to in what the chain connect. The thing about it is, if you look at it this way, I was looking at that something different today, in dollars and cents. Right now, whenever, let's say, a not the entire division, but let's. Not the entire division, but let's say one of their other groups wants to go to training. Cause right now, they cannot do large training out here for that particular reason, the reason they cannot do it. They do small I fire, but they can do any kind of local fire. Closest place they can do this is Fort Hood, Texas, or they have to go to the Fort Hood National Training Center in California. So if you put that, they have to sand all, cause what they do is they took, they take their equipment, they put it on the train. And they have to transfer it from here from Fort Carson all the way to Fort Hood, Texas. The millions of dollars it would take to just send, you know, a small group. Cause what it is, is a division has eighty-seven tanks. But let's say they take a smaller version of that and they'll take twenty or thirty tanks, and then put that, just all the other, put them in the strikers, and they're going out on the train. And send it all the way to Fort Hood, Texas. The millions of dollars that it would cost just to send it. And if they are allowed to have additional training down here. It would be easier for them to transfer their equipment from Colorado Springs to Pinion Canyon rather than sending that to Fort Hood, Texas, or even the National Training Center, which is in Fort Hood, Texas, in California. So, you know, those are, that's really the, 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 the problem with this is that, I believe, I firmly believe this is that. We owe it to our military to be able to give them the best possible training facilities and area that, that, that we can, that they can get. And the amount of time that it would take to transfer them from Fort Carson to Fort Hood or Fort Hood, Texas, if that's where you go. That takes away from their actual training time. But what they do is when they start, when they decide to have a brigade, let's say, train here. It's not that they go from point A to point B and they start training down here. Part of their training starts in Fort Carson and ends in Pinion Canyon, and then it goes back. It's all part of their training capabilities during that, during that travel time. So what it is, is that. When I talked to Ivan Bolden, and he said that the best thing to do would be to put a white paper together. And so he said, okay, so what we did is talk to Luis Lopez, cause that's his area down in District Three. The county is on board with this already. Uh, we've been talking with them, and we've had a vet done talk to. Aaron here about being part of this. Uh, he's been, Mr. Ruler's been part of it. But it's just as far as some of the discussion, but a while back, we had. About eighteen people, like I said, that meeting, somewhere around there. And we met at the Commons area. And we had several people there from Kinder Morgan, who's actually the owner of the pipeline. Uh, we had all of our federal representatives there. There were three of them were there. Uh, we also had our state, or not state, but the city and county, some of our city and county officials there. As well as, I think there were a couple of people online from the state, from the Department of Transportation National, and some from the State Department of Transportation. Listening then, uh, one of the things that they had, that Ivan asked is that to get a letter of support from. The commanding general Doyle out of Colorado Springs. I met him when I went to that meeting a while back. And he said whatever we needed to ask him. So they're in process right now of getting that letter. But it's gotta go through their attorneys and all that stuff for his support as well. So wait, you put that letter to come forward from that, from his, from his end. But anyway, that's kind of the basics of this, of this, this white. Paper is to allow the, the army to be able to utilize that to its full capacity. But then it would also allow more training, more other, other groups to come here from other parts of the country for training. Because if you talk to these people down there, they say it, they say that this is some of the premier training ground that they have in the country. It really is. So it's really important that I think that we, we try to support this. I think it's necessary. Uh, if you really look at it, we are part of, that area down there is part of our national security. You really look at it that way, it really is. Because what you have right now, we have. I think that now includes six now with the Space Command, Colorado Springs. You know, it's all inclusive. You know, we're in such a central part of this, of this city.
So who encourages the cost of the relocation of the gas line?
Well, that would be the army. That would be the army. Matter of fact, that was a question that we asked, if Kinder Morgan would be willing to add up with the money, and of course, they said no.
That would be the government.
Yeah, so it would be the army. And we're looking at between, current dollars around fifty to sixty million dollars.
Yeah, well, I mean, how come the army hasn't addressed this with them? I mean, what is the holdup with them and that? I mean, I don't see where we're gonna make any difference with the letter.
Well, the whole idea is anytime you put a white paper in some of the people at the national level. What it does, like I said, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, we have. What it does is it puts the paper in front of them, so that it says that this is a need that, that should happen. That's all, that's all we're doing with this white paper.
Is the county taking the lead almost?
Actually, we have taken the lead on it. And but together, actually, we're together, we're taking the lead, city and county.
Have you got any feedback from anybody in that area? Cause it's getting impacted.
It is, well, actually, I, I know that there's been a lot of concern for the ranchers down the east border. When Tony House was at that meeting, he said that he had had a, I think it was at that meeting. He said that he was down in Kim a while back, and were talking to some ranchers, and of course, they still have some concerns because of the happened way back when. And he said, the whole idea behind this, and he's, he's in favor of this right now, because at one time, he was part of the, not one more, I could, but that group. But he's in favor of it now is something because he wants to be able to allow them to utilize the property in its entirety, which would not allow for any additional, asking for additional property. So that's the reason why he's so much in favor of it.
So it won't take any more land away from?
Right.
I've been thinking about this for months now, ever since we were up there and went on the helicopter ride, which was amazing. And I've been part of the meetings that we've had on this, and my concern is that. It's a couple of things, timing, I think the timing is just unrealistic. In terms of what information has to be gathered to put a white paper together, but more importantly. I, I'm kind of with Mr. Schu's initial responses, like, why isn't the army doing this? If this is, this is their land, it's their relationship with Kinder Morgan, it's their relationship with their neighbors. The city of Trinidad has very, other than our own patriotic feelings and desire for better, generally better defense. I just don't see what the city of Trinidad has to do with this. Or how we would be the ones who would be. Head, heading up any sort of an effort to get a white paper in front of anyone in Congress, because we. I, I just have a real, that's my real hiccup with this is. I believe that when people start to understand what the army wants to do too, that there might be community pushback. There was a lot of community pushback, so much over a ten-year period that people, you know, joined organizations, formed a nonprofit, put out videos. Because it is such a precious site, it is, there are historical treasures there, there are natural resources, there are animal habitats. And so I don't think that people are gonna be just like, well, that's fine, they just wanna use the land that they have. Because using it more intensively is gonna affect those, those things that they cared about during the opposition to the expansion. So I, I just think it's like grabbing onto something that's really not our business. And I don't really understand it. I, I'm fine with it. I think it's a good idea generally, personally. But as the city of Trinidad, I really need to hear a more compelling reason that we would be the ones who are putting this together. It, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
Oh, I said, we're putting it together with the, with the county.
And even with the county, what does the county really have to do with it?
Because it's in our, it's, it's in our county.
Right.
It's in Los Angeles, it's in Los Angeles County. And that's, you know, part of, you talked about all the cultural and all the other stuff. Over the years, I've been attending all the meetings down there for years now. And it's amazing what they do, what the army does to, to protect all of those properties out there. I mean, it, it's amazing, you saw what, what they do to protect, and they will continue to do that. Because they're required to do that now with all the agreements that went back way back then. So they, they have, they have to stay in agreement with all that stuff. And as, as far as how the city should be involved, like I said, we, the last time this happened way back when, I don't remember for sure. But I don't know if the city was really at the table when all these negotiations were going down way back in nineteen eighty-three. And even in two thousand and seven, when they tried again, the city was, I don't think the city was really at the table as far as I can remember. To say, and I think this would allow us to be able, be able to sit at the table and say, whoever was on council at the time, to say, to raise all the questions that you have. Whether it's, you know, current, and like I said, it's gonna be down the road, probably a few, a couple of other councils down the road.
But so if, if we are gonna be the people asking the questions on behalf of the people who live in Trinidad. Why would we then be the people who are pushing for this? I, I don't, to me, those are, those are conflicting ideas.
Here's, let's look at the economic benefit that we could possibly derive on this, and I think that would be the secondary component of this. The secondary component would be is that by expanded use, and I'll go, I'll go back to when I was working at the lumberyard. Whenever they would come in, they would do a large scale. Training down there. One time alone, I think I sold something like twenty-five thousand dollars worth of merchandise to the army, just for whatever they did. They're building, they're blowing up, whatever they did. But that's one economic, and so any other training that would come in, there would be some additional economic impact here. Plus, the other thing that they've talked about in the past is that if they're able to utilize that property. What they could do is maybe, they've talked about this whether or not this would happen, but it's a possibility. That they could bring some equipment down there and hire local people to work on that equipment. Which would be also an economic impact for the community. Plus also other things, you know, the, all the amount of gravel that is needed for the roads and, I mean. I remember when I was working, like I said, they would come in and they would go after batteries like crazy. Anything that we had on the shelf, it was just like they would just wipe it off the shelf. And so that, that's what they'd look at. And so I, but I really believe that this is something that is, we should be part of, we really should be part of.
I, I'm not, I don't mean to make this a conversation between you and I, but I don't want, I don't think that. They aren't making us any firm promises about what they will do for the city of Trinidad. And so I would say that our support is a valuable thing. And if they want our support, then they would be the ones saying, will you please help us with this? I, you know, and then we would have the right to say, okay, well, we will help you with that, but you need to promise to us that you're gonna do these things. If we're the ones pushing for this, we've lost any ability to ask for any kinds of.
In that regard, like I said, they did ask us to do it. Am I correct, Mr. Ruler, back in twenty twenty-two?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, we went to the.
Strategic planning meeting.
The strategic planning meeting. I, I guess I wasn't clear as to what exactly they asked was at that point. But they did bring up the pipeline as a concern. Uh, it is, you know, a question that I think I have too, as to why the army doesn't pursue this. And I guess the question I would have is, have we received anything from them officially in writing that's asked us, can you put this together? Definitely wanna make sure though, that any efforts we're putting in, we're quantifying what the benefit to the community would be, and what the return on our investment would be. Um, but I, I don't remember, I mean, if anything, I think it's more, this is something they like to do. They would like, it seems like they're kind of flipping it off on us to draft.
I do remember them saying that to start, which should come from the city and the county together, because it's in Los Angeles County. That was the ask.
Okay.
But like I said, I, I think that the white paper itself, and you know, you were talking about the amount of information. As a matter of fact, you saw that white paper, and I, I sent that up to Ivan Bolden. And he said, actually, that, that white paper was too lengthy, that it need to be pared down. Just, just some, I know, into some other stuff that, as a matter of fact, that's some of the information we're, from, from the CG.
I, I think that our only real role would be to either give a statement of support and then ask for what we would like in response for that statement of support. I just honestly don't understand why we would do this. And I, other than again, you know, out of patriotism, but I just don't get it. I really don't.
No questions. I'm a supporter of the military. And veterans and the benefit that we get, you know, as citizens of having such a strong military. And that always comes at some cost, right? But I would, who specifically is asking for this to be an issue?
Well, like I said, the, the initial ask was last year at the strategic planning meeting. And they asked us, they asked the city, because the county officials were there at the time. And they did ask that the, the initial would be for. To start it would be the city and the county. That was the, and then the second ask for the white paper was Ivan Bolden, when I met with him and me.
And it just, I mean, what, what is the purpose of the white paper?
The purpose of the white paper is to put it in front of the people of the Pentagon. So if the time comes that they, that there is an initial ask of moving this project forward, so that they can.
Say something. But that doesn't, that doesn't make any sense to me in the sense of like, we're asking the Pentagon. To make them aware that they need to utilize their own property.
They're, they're aware of, they're aware of the usage, but they just want to allow, be allowed to use that property.
You know, I get that, but like, as, as it stands right now, Pinion Canyon is the United States federal government's property.
Right, right.
And they want to utilize it more fully by moving the pipeline. So I understand if, you know, I think you mentioned one point five million dollars to move a regiment out to where they.
I'm not sure what that dollar is.
Yeah, but let's say it's one point five, and the pipeline's fifty million to move. Well, thirty-three trainings are gonna pay for it, so. Why don't we just pay to have the pipeline moved to the perimeter, perimeter of the property and get on with it? I suspect it's because they want the property, the pipeline moved entirely off of the property, not the perimeter, and then. That's a whole other.
We, we've already determined that moving it up entirely off the property would create more problems.
But, but then that goes back to the first point, we're not necessary to do that, pay the fifty million, have the pipeline moved in.
They are, you said the army agreed to move the pipeline.
Well, they would like you to move it out.
But you, you said they would take the funding, right?
Well, they would have to be.
Yeah, so then we don't need to be.
That's what I see, why would?
Well, the funding would have to come through. Uh, their yearly budget cycle through the Department of Defense.
Yeah, well, they have a lot more money than we do. That's true, they have a lot of money.
Yes and no.
Do they, does the army?
Wait, wait, are, so wait, there's, there's an actual ask for us to help put that build?
Just, just to put the white paper in front of the people that would make that decision down the road.
Yeah, but I mean, it's like literally going to your neighbor's house and saying. Could you, uh, here's a paper that tells you, if you move the basketball to the middle of your yard, you're gonna have a lot more room to bounce your basketball. You should.
Here's the other component that, like I said, I'm asking that, that if we, if we can continue to work on this white paper, that will happen. Uh, before that white paper goes to, you know, back, back to Washington. Is that we will have a community engagement meeting, is it asked out. We know, we've already determined that. And there'll be a lot of questions asked. And at that, at that meeting, we'll have people from Kinder Morgan here, and people in the army here, as well as city and county officials.
A lot of people from the county, yeah.
Yes.
So I'm just asking that, I'm like, so being at the county has already said that they're, they, you know, they're, they're, they're okay with this. Uh, as a matter of fact, they did their idea, as a matter of fact, I sent it to you, I sent it to Mr. Ruler, their idea of a white paper. And what we, what we wanna do is, you know, in the next week, is we wanna sit down between the city and the county and gather all this information. And came up, come up with a white paper, if that makes sense. And then we will have a community forum, and after that, we'll send it out.
The only question I have of any kind of discussion on this was when we were at Pinion Canyon, and it was discussed after we had the tour. But I myself, I'm uncomfortable taking the lead on this. I don't think it should be city and county, it should be county and the county wants us to support them. I just, I remember when Pinion Canyon came and it was not pretty. And I'm just afraid we're gonna, we're gonna kindle those ashes into a raging fire.
This whole place was full and full of people from the county and really complaining about that. And this was years ago. And I don't think any of the feelings down there. And I really kind of think that county commissioners are gonna have some issues with this. Because people down there are just, I don't change.
Like I said, I know that Tony Haas, right, he talked to him.
Yeah.
And he, you know, he had that, he was talking to a few of them that day. And after he explained it, what was it, what his ideas were, it calmed him down.
Well, they had issues with the helicopters going down and making noise. So what kind of noise are they gonna have with artillery shells going off down there? That's another issue.
Oh, yeah.
They're not gonna like that.
These are, these are all things that the army is gonna have to negotiate, you know, when this does come out.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I just feel, it's just army business, not ours. I mean.
It's a citizen's business.
It's a citizen's.
It's not really citizen, that's army property down there that belongs to the United States government. And if they want funding, they can do anything they want. And I, I mean, I understand, I don't have anything against it. I appreciate that, you're right, you know, we need to do our part of it. I don't know what part we'd have in sending a piece of paper to the Pentagon, and I don't know what effect that's gonna have on the community, except for the people down here. Creates hard feelings.
Well, then, like I said, that's why, you know, I know that Aaron was talking about getting all this additional information. And the information that I got from them was to say, you know, take that and pare that information down to, as a matter of fact, there's some information that was in there that is actually going to be excluded because that's what the Kinder Morgan was talking about.
What, what I was concerned about is that the concept of a white paper is not a letter of support. It's not, my understanding of what a white paper is, especially something that's gonna go to the Pentagon, is something that is very specific. It looks at every possible, you know, thing, bad thing that could happen, how that's been mitigated, here's the benefits of it. It's a very complicated topic. We don't even know, based on our conversations with the gentleman from Fort Carson, where exactly it would go. We have, there's no, you know, studies that have been done about the land, if it was gonna go along the northern edge of it. We don't even know if that's a possibility. So we would basically be saying, hey, United States government, we think you should pay to move this line, and we think it's a good idea for these reasons, but so why?
Well, the thing about it is that I do know when they were down here, Mr. Matil was saying that the CG has already authorized to be able to put together an environmental impact study for the movement or whatever else they want to do down there.
Right, which is what the army would do. If the army put the white paper together, they would give all that information to the Pentagon. The Pentagon would say, yes, no, we don't have the money for it or whatever. But we don't have that information. We can't even conceptualize about that information. So I just, I think anything other than after we've seen what exactly it is they wanna do, and they come back to the city of Trinidad and said, "We'd like your support," then we would be able to evaluate, is this something that we support?
Yeah, but it occurs to me, they have the need, they own the property, they are gonna be the soul bearer of the financial responsibility. And, I mean, they need to be the ones that make the first move, right?
Yeah.
Bring the presentation here and then.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I have one question, Mayor. If hypothetically, and it doesn't feel like it, but if we all said, hey, this is a good idea, we should do it, what would the next steps be?
The next step would be, like I said, we just developed this white paper instead of having a 30 or 40-page white paper. Narrowed it down, as a matter of fact, the white paper that, the initial draft that we got was, what, 10 or 12 pages long? And as a matter of fact, when I sent that up. Was that, I sent it to.
A gentleman out at the base who's now retired.
Okay. And, yeah, he prepared it. And when I sent that up to Ivan Bolden, he said to narrow it down a little bit more. Because one thing I know for a fact is anytime you deal with, whether it's state or federal level, the more paper you put in front of them, they don't really look at it. So if you try to do something in short, that's shorter, that's more impactful, that's what you try to do in this particular case. And I know you can probably put together a distance, like Aaron was talking about, and get all this additional information. But the problem is that, will they really look at it? So if you put the paper in front of them and just say, "This is a need, that has to happen."
Why would the army do that?
Right.
I just don't see it.
And Mayor, if I could please, I think a majority of council is saying they're uncomfortable with this. And it's a huge deviation from normal protocol. Anybody who wants anything from the city comes in here, they make an ask, this is a project of massive proportions, to Councilman Ogletree's point, the environmental impact, the what, the where, the when, the how, the why, all of that should come from the army. And if council was going to initiate this and to, again, Councilman Ogletree's point, and negotiate against yourself, like in terms of costs and location and what we're doing, nobody knows what is wanted, or by whom, what division of the army, how. No one knows, and we're speculating, we're surmising. And to make the case publicly, if there was an outcry or people who came in, I know you mentioned a forum, and I'm thinking, my God, if there was a citizen forum on something we know nothing about, that we're the ones initiating the ask, it would be a disaster.
Well, what it would be is that if, whenever we have a forum, we would have the people there to answer the questions.
Okay, I just think a majority of council, I'm sorry, I don't mean to speak out of term or do anything, but a majority of council is saying this is just an incorrect way of doing things. It's not the way things are done, and they're not comfortable with it if I hear what everyone is saying.
You know, to another point, Aaron and Norman and me and Eli and Karen might have, we didn't know nothing about this till right now.
Yes, you did, because about, what, three months ago?
I didn't see anything about a white paper.
I sent all the information to Mr. Roberg, and I asked you to send it to all the council.
Did you get any?
I don't know.
I didn't get any.
Did you send it out?
I believe so, but I'll double check.
And I did have, the city, and I did ask specifically, if you have any questions, please call me.
Because I didn't see any at all.
And that's why I say I.
I mean, it's okay, I mean, I'm just saying, this is the first time I've heard about it, so.
So we could have.
We really know nothing about it, so I'm agreeing with Les. We should get more information about this before we even think about it.
Mayor, I think one of the things that, you know, I think we should focus on and talk about, though, is in your mind, what's the benefit to Trinidad? I know you've talked a little bit about that, but is it to get more of a military presence in our community? What, what do we get out of it?
That could be a possibility as well.
Yeah.
You know, we could add additional employment in the community.
Yeah.
Additional revenue to the community. So where do we go from here?
I'm not, my, I would defer to the rest of council, but I think maybe if a joint session where the commissioners express their opinion and clearly articulate a need for us to be in there, that might be helpful. I don't know.
I'm just afraid that we're gonna encumber ourselves with any kind of support now that we're gonna have to pay sometime in the future. Maybe not monetarily, but with bad feelings or.
Yeah, I agree with you, because it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
There's been so many issues down there.
Yeah.
You know, people just don't read the frank prayer. Sometimes they take advantage of what it looks like, you know, and to me, it sounds like a lot of those people, by moving that gas line, the army might be looking for some expansion in the, you know, in the future, so that could be an issue there.
That's what I didn't say.
And I mean, they keep saying that they ain't gonna do it, but if the army wants to do it, they're gonna do it. And that's my opinion, I think that. And I really don't see any benefit to us by signing a piece of paper that really don't have a lot to do with us and the community for that. They've said that when the army first moved there, when I was on council, that they were gonna bring all this money into town and do this and do that, and they did, occasionally, like you did at the lumberyard. But since then, it hasn't been very good.
And the reason why is that they're, you know, the restriction of the amount of training.
Well, that's true, too, they have cut back a lot. But, you know, those are issues that we need to look at because some of that isn't gonna change either, you know. I mean, I'm for the, if they wanna get down there and stuff, but not like, I'm kind of like with Aaron and Les and even Karen here, that I don't see any point.
Karen, so paper, not you. I agree with you.
But, I mean, that's only my opinion, and we all have our says, but that's, I think the most important thing is to get more information and talk to people.
What I can do here now is, like I said, like the, the many general, what they do is they send, he's put together something evidently, but he sends it up to their legal, and I'll ask if he can actually put in there a specific ask. Yeah.
And I think everybody on the council supports the army. I mean, we want a governor and everything else. I mean, there's nothing against that.
So if he came forward with a specific ask to ask us to be part of this.
I would, I would feel most comfortable if this is something the army wants, that they write a white paper, and that they, if they want our support for it, they come here and we get to ask them questions and get commitments from them about what it is they want to do. I am truly, to this day, baffled why they put this in our lap. I mean, it makes no sense whatsoever.
I'll do that, and then we'll take it from there and see what happens. Because like I said, because like I said, the biggest thing is that trying to get it in front of this gentleman at the Pentagon before he retires. That was, that was kind of the thing, because he felt like he could push it through, because he's been in it for like 20 something years, as getting into the right place.
Well, I mean, if the army really fills a need for it, how come they haven't pushed this issue, you know, themselves? I just don't understand that part, why they haven't, haven't done it, and they want someone.
They're always pushing.
Somebody else wants to lead the thing. But yeah, that's a good idea, to get more information's gonna help a lot.
I'll see if they can put in that, from the CG, if he can put in a specific act, just asking us that we be part of this. And he may already, we've been doing that. But I'll pause under an email. Okay, exit 14, it's another issue I wanted to bring up. We had the TPR meeting, what, two weeks ago, whatever? And, you know, there's been questions about whether or not we purchase that property or not. And what, Boykin and you were there, you were listening in, and they put it back in our ballpark. And what they're saying is that if they are going to consider redoing the exit 14 ramp, that they want us to make the commitment that we try to purchase that property. And if we don't, then they will move that money to exit 13. But if they moved to exit 13, when they did their 10-year plan, that exit 13 was gonna cost, because right now they've got like $5 million to do that exit, but they're even, they're short $2 or $3 million, from what I understand. But exit 13 would cost, Aaron, do you, do you remember what that exit 13?
I don't remember.
It was, it was a lot higher than that.
A lot, yeah.
It was a lot higher. And they probably couldn't fund that because of the ask. But if all this falls through, Walsenburg would like that money. So that was something that was, John Volusia specifically asked that day. He said, well, it all out, we'll take the money.
Yeah.
So really, what are we gonna do?
Has anything changed with the property owners still willing to?
We're waiting for, did we get the survey?
Not that I've seen.
Need to call him again, as he was, we talked to the surveyor. And before they do the survey, or before they do the appraisal, he needs to finish the survey, because they need to know what they're serving. When I talked to Gary Terry last Thursday, he was, it was Thursday, he was trying to finalize his paperwork on it. And then they can send it out to get the appraisals done. And that, it just depends as to whether or not that the owners say in your name. And there is one really willing seller up there, we don't know that. The other one is, you know, until he sees the appraisal, he'll make a decision. It's been a while, so we don't know what has changed. They hold it as been the surveyor. But the big thing, like I said, is that they wanted to make one from us, but we were throwing it around. Because if the council decided they wanted to do anything with exit 14, then I don't know what happened to the money. And that exit 14 will stay the same way it is. That's the scary part.
Yeah, if I can fill in just a couple things. We staffed that with CDOT as well on this project. And what they told us at that time was they do have the $5 million. They were actually eyeing exit 15 as an alternative to do some redevelopment there. But they are looking in, my understanding is, to see if there's a way they can reconfigure the off-ramp. They said that's gonna take the bulk of the $5 million just to do that project, using the existing right-of-way that's there. They think there's one street by the J&amp;J building that would absolutely have to be purchased to make that successful. But my understanding is they're still looking to see if that's even a feasible thing without moving the building or something like that. So I think what they told us in the meeting is there is certainly a portion of land acquisition that I think would have to happen. But I don't know that we're there to the point that it says everything that we would have to purchase to make the project happen. So it'd probably be a good idea for our CDOT reps to come present to you all, so you can hear from them what they're considering. And just so that we give up all the information, and we can see if we can get someone down here as soon as the next council meeting or the next work session.
If I may, I think, you know, if we have a presentation with, you know, rather than going to identify with a knife, we'll show up with the information, right? So I think it'd be good to get the representative here, and that will let us make a clear decision.
And I can tell you that the funding, though, on the timelines, it has to be spent by 2026, so got a few years. It seems like a little ways, or maybe it has to be committed by 2026 and then spent a certain amount of time thereafter, so.
Well, I think the important thing, too, is what are we gonna do with that? I mean.
And that's really what you all might want to talk about today.
I mean, we really need to sit down and work something out to see what we want done with it, if we purchase it, if it's possible, if we're not saying we're for sure either.
I'm, I'm not in favor of purchasing a commercial property and taking it off the tax rolls. If you're talking about the. I think, I know that exit 14 southbound needs to be changed. It's not attractive, it's not bringing people off the highway. The city and their private developer has developed La Porta project. And I think we can do better, we have to do better. But I think, you know, I've been talking to Mr. Roberg. We're discussing different options for that exit. We have to make it more appealing, absolutely have to do it. Absolutely have to do it. And what, I think it's premature to buy land, buy a building now until we know for sure what options are available to us.
That's what I'm saying, we need to find out.
You know, Shuro's going to give us the grim, the grim information pretty quick.
Well, if, if this is a decision that's going to be made by the next council, whether to buy that land or not, um, but I think, I wouldn't be comfortable, um, telling CDOT that we recognize that that's a really important entrance to our city. Whatever land they say we need to buy to get that done, we will do that.
Yes.
And then we'll also, you're also considering this other land, um, if it is stuff that, if it is land that can be used for the city's benefit. But that's something that the next council will decide, don't worm your way out of it. True, it's true, that is the truth.
It's the truth.
It is, that, that council will decide that, and, but we, I think everybody agrees that that exit needs to be fixed. So I'd be fine telling them, yeah, we'll buy whatever we think.
I just, I just, I just think that, like everybody, that that exit, people can just complain about it, complain about it. And not only that, but because of the five-way intersection that's there, it just doesn't work for anything.
I agree, Mayor, um, just looking at the finance side, so CDOT's telling us the entire 5 million that they have allocated for the project would only go to pay for the reconfiguration of the off-ramp. So the actual intersection at Five Points, there's no CDOT money, we would be obligated for that. Now, the money, I think we have 1. something obligated, is that right, Shuro? 1.2 million, uh, obligated to that project. Of course, we don't know what the price of buying those buildings would be, so that may eat up a significant portion of that. And then I don't know where we would have money to reconfigure the actual intersection itself, so we need to figure that out as well. And what the ultimate disposition of that traffic light in Five Points area.
So CDOT wouldn't help us with that?
They, they're saying that the money they have allocated for exit 14, they, their estimate is it's only going to pay for the off-ramp, it's
I have Now, one thing that we did hear at that meeting, I think it was at that TPR meeting, that there is some traffic signaling money that is available.
That's true, we'd have to find another pot of money to pay for it.
There is, from what I understand.
I have two observations, the, the one is, um, with the West Main redevelopment coming up, I mean, any CDOT money that would, um, potentially be brought to that exit would be super helpful and um, really be a nice, uh, you know, symbiotic situation there to, to multiply the effect of money. Um, that's something that we may consider, uh, and I know that's strong original work. Also, and I don't know how germane this is to this discussion, but, um, with respect to the people that came for public comment at our last council meeting, a significant portion of the, um, less than desirable appearance of, of that area and exit comes down to code enforcement. So we have, we have control over that aspect of it too, so I just want to remind us of that. I know, I know it's something that we're all speaking of and very, um, actively thinking about, so I think it's something that we need to consider.
Could the garbage bags be taken off?
Mr. Ruber?
Yeah.
You also said that if they do that exit there, we'd also have to purchase additional where J and M is on that street, right? Or something there, because that's another expense?
Yeah, there is a, a portion of the street to the south, it actually is a street, it's the south, the south road that goes by the J and J building.
Right.
They think at a minimum to reconfigure the exit, that would have to be acquired, at, at an absolute minimum. But, um, it sounds like from the mayor, maybe I misheard it, but they're, they're saying they want us to buy the whole property, is that what?
They, that's what I heard, is that they want us to make complete changes.
Okay, I, I will, I'll
That's what they did say, they said, ball's in your park.
Okay. I guess maybe what, um, and we do have this as a agenda, I don't want to belabor the conversation, but what would be helpful is clear direction from the council as to what you all want to do with that area.
I think if, if we're going to purchase property, we should have a really, really clear and present need and, um, and an actual idea of what we're going to build, I mean, there should be some glaring need. Um, because to take it off the tax rolls, you're losing out, and then also, uh, with the strategic plan coming up, if we can get, um, additional upside dollars through whatever means, I think it's best to let, uh, the private sector do what they can and how they can, because then that leads to further tax dollars, uh, jobs, all sorts of stuff. But I, I still think it's worth the discussion.
Yeah.
My, my request would be, let's get the CDOT, CDOT rep here and have that discussion with all the cards on the table that we might, uh, but
Well, the other thing that I was thinking about too is that, you know, we have, I'm not sure if it's the strategic plan portion or the area-wide planning, is that they're going to give us some idea of not only that area, but all around town. But if, and we could, whoever is on council at the time, that you guys can zero in as to what that property or what the recommendations are. That may give you additional clear direction. You know, I'm not sure how soon, uh, CDOT is expecting an answer of a commitment. I really don't know if it's by the end of the year or after, I really don't know.
Yeah, Mayor, I think we have some time on that, again, they just want to have the money committed by 2026. So what I can do is I'll get with our, our CDOT engineers, our representatives, I think Jennifer is who we would want to reach out to. Um, and see if she can attend maybe next week's council meeting to do a discussion item with you all.
When is that area-wide planning supposed to be completed?
They are, I believe they're putting the final touches on it, it should be soon, it'll be at this ball.
So that, you know, that would also, like I said, give us an idea of, a direction for that property.
Yeah.
Another I can't let Walselberg have scum to our
No, we definitely don't want to let that.
Have scum. Okay, that's, that's the end of our work session items, and